This meeting is called to order. Please stand for the invocation to be led by Ms. Pollitt Higgins, who's a volunteer at CASA. And we will have the Pledge of Allegiance afterward.
Thank you. That's great. Father God, we just come to this with honor and glory for who you are. We just pray to the men and the women in this room that are giving it themselves, for this community. We pray that you would give them great unity in the decisions that they make. We pray that you will give them guidance and wisdom, insight and inspiration for the betterment of this community, that the citizens and the families within it may live in safety and prosperity. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. If you would, let me share a couple things about your role with CASA. This is, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and on April 2nd, I read a proclamation proclaiming this month as CASA Volunteer Month in the entire city of Van Buren. What do you think, Paul?
Oh, yes. I'm so glad to talk about CASA. I've been working with them for, I lost count, I think about 12 years now, as a volunteer advocate. CASA stands for, in case you don't know, Quarter Pointed Special Advocate, and the key word there is "advocate" because that's what their role is. As you may or may not know, Crawford, Sebastian County have the most, have historically had the most kids in care as anywhere in the state of Arkansas. That's not a statistic we're proud of, but a lot of kids go into care. And they, it's just so traumatic, due to no circumstance of their own, or no fault of their own, due to poor choices, lack of resources, whatever, these kids are taken from their homes and they're taken to a strange place, be it a shelter, foster home. They will have to come to a court house, which is very scary and traumatizing for them. They meet a caseworker, which historically will not remain their caseworker. There's so much turnover, the caseworkers all have different items, they'll have different foster family shelters, they just move. And it's just such a traumatic ordeal for these kids. So a CASA advocate goes through 30 hours of training, and then they are assigned by the judge, a child or a sibling group, to advocate for. And that you just, that child knows that wherever they go, that CASA's going to show up. Everybody else may change, they may have a lot of turnover in their life, but that CASA person is committed to that. Sorry, I didn't hear much.
Appreciate it.
So, you also, the CASA advocates also in the room when the case plan is developed with that family, and they give their input on what the parents need to do, a biological family needs to do for reunification. So we also work with biological family to make sure they understand that case plan, that they're getting the resources that they need. And we meet the kids' teachers, with their therapists, with their, anybody that's involved in their case. And then we make reports every time they have a hearing of what we've observed. And we're very fortunate in Crawford County that the judges are very, put a lot of weight into what the CASA volunteer has to say about the case. And we listen to the kids, with their voice, and let them know, let the judge know what they want, what they need, what we recommend for the child. So, I would just encourage, if you know anybody who would want to do this, that you would encourage them to get in touch with us. A lot of times, they ask how long, how much of a commitment does it take? And we usually say about 10 hours a month. That's really on the high side when you first get a case, that's probably the case, like when they're meeting all the, all the people that are, have a role in the case. But after that, it's, it's not really that much, because most of the things you can do via email, phone calls, or stopping their doctors and therapists and teachers and so forth. So, a lot of people say, "Oh, I work full-time, I can't do this." But it's, a lot of our volunteers work full-time, a lot of them. And they just visit their children on the weekends and in the evenings. The only thing is, you know, they do have to go to court every 60 to 90 days, but most employers are very willing to be flexible about that. So, if you know anybody who you think would love to do this, who have a heart for children, want to be a voice for a child, I would encourage them to call.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You know, this, I speak a lot, basically trying to sell Van Buren to a lot of people. Now, what is it about Van Buren that's so special? It's hard to put into words, but what you're talking about, that, that's what it is. You know, having volunteers like Ms. Higgins, and caring about those in need, and filling those roles that are desperately needed, as you're explaining, that's what makes us who we are. I appreciate you.
My God, so have the child, I mean, a CASA for every child that comes into care. And we're not there yet, but.
What is that short of?
What is it short of? Otherwise, I couldn't tell you. I'm gonna, I would guess, venture to guess, we have a CASA for about three fourths of the cases probably that come in, but we still could really use some.
Are any of your grandchildren CASA kids?
No.
They weren't on. Two of our, two of our grandsons play on basketball, two of my grandsons.
Yeah, we have some, a lot of adopted children in our family, but none of them have been to foster care. That's awesome.
And I know you're emotionally invested, is that, is it going to take somebody to really dedicate their life a little bit for you?
It, I mean, yes. You're, you're putting yourself out there for sure, but it's very rewarding. The cases that I've had over the 12-year period, I cannot think of one that I thought we didn't make a difference. You know, I'm not saying me personally, but CASA as a whole. So, you know, this, it's hard, but it's very, very rewarding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we're delighted to have a new police officer swear in tonight. I think that's through a lot of the audience on the side of the room is swearing. Come on up, Cherie. As you know, we've, members of the council, we, come up, I'm scared. We hired a new officer, we like to bring him here, not only, I don't want that, our clerk to swear the officer or officers in, but also these officers opportunity to introduce their family, other family here, and friends here to support them. And so tonight, we get to swear in Cherie Oftai Toshiki.
Okay, she.
I was close. Many of you may know Cherie, I see some firefighters here also. She's been a police and firefighter dispatch, fire dispatch for two years, I think, almost three years now. So, we're happy that she's becoming an officer, but kind of sad in the sense that we lose her as a dispatcher, so. Here's a guess over here, so. Without further ado, we'd like our clerk to give the open office, and then Cherie would like a minute to do a speech.
Right.
May you step over here. Ready to write in? Repeat after my name. I state your name.
I'm Cherie Oftai Toshiki.
Having been duly appointed as a police officer.
Having been duly appointed as a police officer.
At the city of Van Buren.
At the city of Van Buren.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will defend.
That I will defend.
In force and obey.
In force and obey.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The laws of the state of Arkansas.
The laws of the state of Arkansas.
And the ordinances of the city of Van Buren.
And the ordinances of the city of Van Buren.
That I will obey the lawful orders.
That I will obey the lawful orders.
Of my superiors.
Of my superiors.
And the policies and regulations.
And the policies and regulations.
Of the Van Buren Police Department.
Of the Van Buren Police Department.
That I'll, that I will protect the rights.
That I will protect the rights.
Property and the lives.
Property and the lives.
Of all citizens.
Of all citizens.
With my life if need be.
With my life if need be.
This I solemnly swear, so help me God.
This I solemnly swear, so help me God.
Agreed.
Mayor, you want to take a picture? Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead. One or two. You got some paper back here. Did you get one? Buddy? Real quick. She wanted a picture of him. She said. There we go. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Good girl. Next one. It's hearing this.
Yeah.
What's making that happen, right? All of a sudden, I wonder.
Yeah.
Nobody's.
Hey, pushing buttons, yeah.
And no one's getting around. Right.
You can start hearing it.
It's a little antiquated. If anybody'd like to give donation towards the system, we'd be really glad to take that. It's that, that lock is finicky.
If y'all don't get that pretty quick, we'll get the farmer to come up there.
Just the master volume.
Okay. Now, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Dodson?
Here.
Councilmember Nealon?
Here.
Councilmember Petty?
Here.
Councilmember Spartman?
Here.
Councilmember Swain?
Here.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Do you have a copy of the minutes from last month's regular meeting, March 25th, 2019? Are there any corrections or comments? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn the minutes as written.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Repose. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a resolution for the disposal and destruction of certain city records. I'll ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
Being enacted by the City Council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution authorizing payment to APAC Central Incorporated for asphalt for the overlay of streets within the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, and for other purposes. Whereas the city of Van Buren desires to continue with a program of street repairs and improvements, and as a part of that program, the Street Department will overlay portions, portions of various other interior streets within the city of Van Buren, and whereas the Van Buren City Council approved funds in the 2019 budget for street repairs and in-house projects, and whereas Arkansas Code Annotated 14-58-104 waives the requirement for competitive bidding for asphalt, and whereas the city of Van Buren will purchase asphalt from APAC Central Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $350,000 for said projects. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, the mayor and city clerk are by authorized by the City Council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, for the purpose of providing for the disposal and destruction of certain police and city clerk records, whereas the Van Buren Police Department and the Van Buren City Clerk's Office have outdated, unnecessary and redundant records that need to be disposed of and destroyed, and whereas the Van Buren Police Department and the Van Buren City Clerk's Office have identified said records to be destroyed, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Van Buren, Arkansas. That's section one, the Van Buren Police Department has been authorized to arrange for the destruction by shredding identified records in accordance with ACA 16-10-211A3K and ICA 14-2-204, see attached listing. Section two, the Van Buren City Clerk's Office has been authorized to arrange for the destruction by shredding identified records in accordance with Arkansas Code Annotated 14-59-114, see attached listing.
Are there any questions? There's an attachment here that you can see what the documents are, what the records represent. Any questions? Do I hear a motion to adopt a resolution? Read.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Aye.
One second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Swain?
Aye.
Councilmember Wood?
Aye.
Councilmember Spartman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon?
Aye.
Councilmember Petty?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson?
Aye.
The ayes have it, therefore declare the resolution, which is number?
04-01-2019.
04-01-2019 has passed. The next item on the agenda is a resolution regarding payment to APAC Central for the purchase of asphalt. I'll ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
Being enacted by the City Council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution authorizing payment to APAC Central Incorporated for asphalt for the overlay of streets within the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, and for other purposes. Whereas the city of Van Buren desires to continue with a program of street repairs and improvements, and as a part of that program, the Street Department will overlay portions, portions of various other interior streets within the city of Van Buren, and whereas the Van Buren City Council approved funds in the 2019 budget for street repairs and in-house projects, and whereas Arkansas Code Annotated 14-58-104 waives the requirement for competitive bidding for asphalt, and whereas the city of Van Buren will purchase asphalt from APAC Central Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $350,000 for said projects. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, the mayor and city clerk are by authorized by the City Council for the city of Van Buren to pay all invoices to APAC Central Incorporated from capital improvement and street funds relating to these overlays, and next to you, all documents necessary to fix right this resolution.
This is really nothing new. We've done this in the past. APAC is a local business. We have had really good success with them in the past, and we have used other asphalt providers in further off locations in Arkansas, and that wasn't always the best experience for various reasons, density problems. So it just makes sense for us to continue this relationship with APAC, and we're ready to get, get going on some of our asphalt street projects. Do I hear a motion?
I'd like that motion.
Second.
The clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Swain?
Aye.
Councilmember Wood?
Aye.
Councilmember Spartman?
Aye.
Councilmember Petty?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson?
Aye.
The ayes have it, therefore declare the resolution, which is number?
04-02-2019.
04-02-2019 has passed. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance to rezone certain property. I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance in its entirety.
Being enacted by the City Council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 7-1963, Van Buren Municipal Code Number 14.04.01, for the purpose of rezoning certain property in the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, amending the zoning map of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, and for other purposes. Whereas the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, is duly incorporated under the law of the state of Arkansas, with all powers, authority and duties of the city of the first class, and whereas the city of Van Buren has adopted the zoning ordinance for the city of Van Buren, ordinance number 7-1963, and whereas a request has been made by Stan Green to rezone certain property within the city limits of the city of Van Buren, and whereas notice of a public hearing was duly published in the press office on March 16, 2019, and a public hearing was conducted as required by law, ACA 14-56-422, on April 2, 2019. And whereas, as a result of this hearing, the planning commission has recommended that certain property within the city limits of the city of Van Buren be rezoned from its previous classification to the following. Properties owned R2, two-family residential district. New zoning R3, multifamily residential district. Legal description, part of the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of section 19, South Ship 9, north range 31, west Crawford County, Arkansas, being more particular, described as follows. Commencing at southwest corner of the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter, then along the west line of said 40, north zero two degrees, 19 minutes, 50 seconds east, 251.97 feet to an existing feet cutting nail and the point of beginning. This continue along said west line, north zero two degrees, 19 minutes, 50 seconds east, 242.60 feet to a set feet cutting nail. Then sleeping said west line, south 87 degrees, 53 minutes, 23 seconds east, 342.41 feet to an existing iron pin. Then south 06 degrees, 03 minutes, 10 seconds east, 121.28 feet. Then south 66 degrees, 48 minutes, 59 seconds west, 286.27 feet to a set rebar with cap. Then north 88 degrees, 01 minutes, 07 seconds west, 101.74 feet to the point of beginning, containing 1.62 acres and subject to street, route of ways and easements of record. Lammers description, 118 North 20th, Van Buren, Arkansas. Whereas the proposed rezoning hearing was recommended by a majority vote of the entire planning commission in accordance with ACA 14-56-422. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the City Council of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, the above described property is hereby rezoned from R2 to R3, and the Van Buren zoning map is amended to reflect this rezoning.
Do we have a motion to suspend the rules and go to a second reading?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Repose. The ayes have it, declare the motion carried, and ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title for a second time.
An ordinance to amend ordinance number 7-1963, Van Buren Municipal Code Number 14.04.01, for the purpose of rezoning certain property in the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, amending the zoning map of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Do we have a motion to further suspend the rules and go to a third, final reading?
Motion. Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye. Repose. How late did you guys hear?
Yeah, I won't get them helping. The ayes have it, declare the motion carried, and ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title for the third and final reading.
An ordinance to amend ordinance number 7-1963, Van Buren Municipal Code Number 14.04.01, for the purpose of rezoning certain property in the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, amending the zoning map of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Now, is our discussion, is there, was there someone here representing?
What's that?
Maybe just give us a general idea of what's going on. We've got some handouts here that shows the location that you can see. It's been through the planning commission, and we're recommending it today.
Hello, members of the City Council, good to see you. Thank you for having me, and thank you for hearing my voice. I would just like to put a couple of little multifamily units in that little block of the property.
David was ready?
This, this is a property right across 20th Street from the Van Buren Hall. It runs right along Town Beach, and it's a city area for.
How did you figure it out?
It's a, it used to be the pallet yard for a while, they had their, it seemed like a good, good thing to put there in that piece of property. There's some smoke fluid, it's a long town beach, a lot of commercial buildings, so it's a big, kind of a bumper area for this.
So you, you.
So, how many units are you going to have there? Six?
Five.
Five? And they're gonna, are they gonna be two-story or one-story?
Two.
Same story?
Yes.
My only comment or question out loud here is, I don't disagree with what David is saying, but it is surrounded entirely by R2. There's just up the streets some R3, but I don't know if it's actually developed as R3. So I don't want us to get into a spot zoning situation.
I'll address that in my information. Was it the Denver zone?
C2 across the ditch from here. It was R2 in that area, which is, it's about, right about a block away, so.
I think what we thought it might be, like a buffer zone between a commercial and a R2, and it was not inconsistent with the use in that area is what I remember.
There are some duplexes around there.
There are some, well, to the door or back.
Yeah, because the C2 is immediately in front of it, so that would kind of act as a buffer between, you know, smart, it's the, and the commercial is kind of what we had booked at, and. There's some R3, it's not immediately.
There is R3, it's developed, is, is developed to see what they have right now.
I'm fairly confident that it was the buffer zones, what we were primarily relying on and looking at, and being able to have a good use of that property is another thing. One thing I'm sure of planning commission meetings is that we fully explore all of that, so that, you know, the most important thing is that we just not make an arbitrary decision that appears to be just a spot zoning without any recognition. It's not just a black and white, oh, it's a spot zone, so, because there's nothing else around it. I mean, there's your full analysis that goes into it, and that's what I try to do, make sure that we do in planning commission, I think, just outside those discussions.
Well, the reason I ask is that sometimes I, I don't get the sense that you fully see that every time, and so I was just asking, it sounds like you guys talked through it and you're up with it.
We have a full discussion of these topics issued in the planning commission, and so that's one of the reasons I think that Mayor Freeman previously had preferred those to planning mission for the public hearing, so that we have more opportunity for in-depth questions and discussion, so, and we definitely do.
The neighbors were notified, was there any opposition in that?
How about the granite basement that's there? How far away are you going to be from that, and what's the?
Out of the flood plain.
It is out of the flood.
Or will be out of the flood.
You're going to build out of the flood plain.
Yes.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to drop the ordinance, or is read?
The clerk please call roll.
Councilmember Swain?
Aye.
Councilmember Wood?
Aye.
Councilmember Spartman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon?
Aye.
Councilmember Petty?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson?
Aye.
The ayes have it, therefore declare the ordinance, number?
06-2019.
06-2019 has passed.
Very, very appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is financial report. The clerk please read the amount. Motion. Second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Repose. The motion carried. Under boards and commissions, we have a few here to reappoint, and also a new appointment on the civil service commission, Mr. Doug Brooks. Chief Ammons, or anything you know about?
Guys, you, uh, we have an opening in our civil service commission, and so we kicked it around, Chief Arnold and I, and the mayor, and I came up with a suggestion, who is Mr. Doug Brooks. Doug and I worked together at enforcement police, and he retired there recently as a sergeant. He did some work also internal, in, in internal affairs in the last part of his career, so he knows the ins and outs of the commission, and the work of the commission, and the rules, and how they should be applied. He probably thinking, well, it sounds like I'm stacking the deck of my favorite, and I promise you, that's, that's going to be further from the truth. Doug was, is probably one of the, has the more integrity, probably any cop that I ever worked with, not only as a cop, but also as a human, as a citizen, so I would, I would, I would say that if there was ever a question, if there was a time to side with a firefighter or a police officer or their bosses, he would probably side with a firefighter or a police officer. I'm just the kind of guy he is. Again, I'm not stacking the deck, I'm not picking my friends, he is my friend, of course, but I do go to the commission, but I truly believe and hope you understand that he is the guy who would need to have on some professional.
Well, where, where does he do his job?
The commission needs, I'm not sure why somebody made, well, probably going to have to go to the commission, man. Is that what you mean, that is you go to the commission? Yeah, and they just. The motion carried. Under boards and commissions, we have a few here to reappoint and also a new appointment on the civil service commission, Mr. Doug Brooks. Chief Ammons, or anything you know about...
Guys, you, uh, we had an opening in our civil service commission, and so we kicked it around, Chief Arnold and I, and Mayor, and I came up with a suggestion, who is Mr. Doug Brooks. Doug and I worked together at enforcement police, and he retired there recently as a sergeant. He did some work also internal, in, in internal affairs, uh, in the last part of his career. So he knows the ins and outs of the commission, and the work of the commission, and the rules, and how they should be applied, and he probably thinking, well, it sounds like I'm stacking the deck of my favorite, and I promise you that's, that's, that's going to be further from the truth. Doug was, is probably one of the, has the more integrity of probably any cop that I ever worked with, not only as a cop, but also as a human, as a citizen, so, um, I would, I would, I would, I would say that if there was ever a question, if there was a time to side with, uh, the firefighter, or police officer, or their bosses, he would probably side with a firefighter or a police officer. Just the kind of guy he is, again, I'm not stacking the deck, I'm not picking my friends, he is my friend, of course, but I do have the commission, but I truly believe and hope you understand that he is the guy who we need to have on our civil service commission.
Well, where, where does he do his job?
The commission needs, uh, I'm not sure why somebody made, well, probably gonna have to go to the commission, man, is that what you mean, is he going to the commission? Yeah, and they just, uh, they, they ensure that the testing for police and firefighters is fair and done appropriately, and if ever there is a time where a police officer or firefighter receives a certain form of discipline, then the, the commission acts as a, at the hearing to appeal. They want to appeal the decision of the, of the fire chief or police chief, and they can appeal that decision to the civil service commission.
How many of people are there doing it? Seven?
Five.
Five commissioners?
Five.
Then there's six-year terms?
Yes.
And then the, Mr. Joe Stewart from Citizens Bank is the chairman.
Where's he from?
Go ahead, Doug.
Sorry, I grew up in Fort Smith in the River Valley. We moved to Bambier about ten years ago.
That's it.
And we love Bambier. We're building just north of, off of North Ridge, there's a cul-de-sac down there called...
Yeah, we need more traffic to come there.
His pop also attended Bambier schools.
Oh, well, there you go. You're in. I never get to meet the people we approve.
Well, there you go.
That's why I brought it, just to go to say that. And we're glad to have you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Spartman, we had an idea, we were gonna hide him in the back. If you ask your question, I'd jump out of that. So do I hear a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Doug Brooks to the civil service...
You think I'd make that motion? I make the motion that we approve him, as soon as we find out where he does his job.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Declare the motion carried. Next, we have the reappointments, uh, for planning commissioners, Mr. John Sommons, Mr. Jason Myers, Mr. Mark Evans, and Miss Tiffany Webster. They're not here today.
They're not here. They're on the way.
But they have served for the commission as long as I've, uh, been there, and they've, they've done a really good job. Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to second it.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Declare the motion carried. Next on the agenda are department reports. You have copies of the reports from all the different departments. If there's any questions, you can ask those. If not, I will declare those filed as submitted. Under miscellaneous and general discussion, we have a street closing request in Bambier and middle school ban camp. Should have a, an attachment there. It's gonna be on June seventh. I think that did this last year.
Yes, they did.
So do I have a motion to pre-request?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, Ms. Conmark is gracious enough to show that they'd let us have an update on Almost Home Shelter. Just another example of the great volunteers we have in this community, and this is another one of those issues that, we're not the only city that has to deal with this sort of thing, but we appreciate all of you.
Thank you. I appreciate you allowing Almost Home to come and give a start giving a quarterly report on, uh, what's going on at the, at the shelter. I'm going to just quickly go over our intakes and, for the last three months. In January, we took in twenty dogs. We had eleven of those claimed. Five of those were adopted locally, and sixteen went to New England on transport. Then in February, we took in fifty-five dogs. That was a big month. Nineteen of those dogs were claimed, seven were, uh, adopted locally, and fourteen went to New England, and four went to Illinois or Wisconsin. And then in March, we had forty-eight, another large number, twenty-two reclaimed, seven were adopted locally, eighteen went to New England, and fourteen went to Illinois or Wisconsin. So for the first quarter of the year, we had a total of a hundred and twenty-three dogs come in. Fifty-two reclaimed, nineteen were, uh, adopted locally, and sixty-six were transported. So, you know, as you can see, the local adoption is so much lower than we really would like for it to be, so that's why we do the transports. If it wasn't for the transports, we would, we would be in a world curve. And just quickly to explain to you about the transports, we have checked out the three places that we transport to, and they are, you know, they're all these shelters like us that are trying to get their foot in the door with these people, and we have been lucky enough to do so. We have some volunteers that work very hard to get, get us on these transports and to maintain a really great relationship with them. And these people are so dedicated on the dogs that, the people that they adopt these dogs out to, they say it's really hard, but these state, just like New England, they have such strict dog laws. They don't have all the loose and the stray dogs like we have in our area. So they are willing, uh, they are willing to pay a lot of money. Some of them pay five hundred dollars for a mixed breed dog. We adopt a dog out for fifty dollars, it could sit in our shelter for months. It goes up there, it usually already has an adopter that meets the transport truck and gets their dog. And if not, the dogs go into foster. They don't go into a shelter. They're either go into their new adoption home. We get pictures back, videos back from the new owners about how happy they are, and, you know, our dogs are all very healthy, and we care for them very, very well. So transporting, a lot of people don't get that, but, uh, you know, it's something that we have to do in order to save the animals and to give these dogs a second chance at, at life. We don't get any of that money. This money goes for this, we transport the dogs either to Little Rock or Memphis, and there they meet a big transport truck. And so the money goes for the transport truck. But anyway, that's, that's what we have done as far as, uh, our intakes and everything. And, uh, in case you don't know, we get the dogs in, they're only brought in by animal control. We can't take in, uh, a personal surrender or something like that. And so only dogs in the city of Bambier can come in. We have them for five days, they're on the police, uh, on their Facebook page, they're on our Facebook page, and we try to get that out there so people know that, you know, we've got their dogs. If they have not been claimed within five days, that's when they become the property of Almost Home, and at that point, we start getting all their shots, give them spaver neutered, heartworm checked, and we spend quite a bit of money on each dog. And then we start trying to, uh, adopt that dog out locally, and if it's not adopted out locally pretty quickly, well, we start working with our transports. And I want you guys to know, in case you're not aware of this, we try to get out in the public, and it's not so much, they call it adoption days, but it's really not so much to adopt a dog, it's to let people know and make them aware that Bambier now has a shelter. Because so many people will see them and they'll say, oh, we didn't know there was a shelter there. And some of the things we've done in the last three months, we've had a adoption day at Pet Sense, uh, we had our open house at the shelter, that was on the twenty-third of March, which was, uh, spring break, so, uh, we didn't have, uh, we had a lot of people that came even though it was a rainy day, but I think most of you guys didn't, couldn't make it, but Alan did come out, uh, later in the week and took a tour. Uh, we've participated in the Kissir Park contest out at Bambier. What's popping here in Bambier, they're having a little fundraiser all month for us, uh, something we're really proud of, and I hope you guys have seen, on five forty, uh, coming into Bambier, by where Simmons is, we now have a billboard, and we are so happy about that. Larry and Camille Breeden donated the billboard, and Marlon Bearden paid for the signage, so we're just really happy about that. We think that's gonna help us a lot. And then this last Saturday, we were at the Kissir Ape Hunt at Creekmore all day long, and then, of course, we're planning on being at Steep Hunt, uh, next month. And, uh, we also have partnered with Tractor Supply, Pet Sense, and we are in the process, Pet Smart has asked us to partner with them, and they have a very stringent application. The rules are fifty-three pages long. So she's coming to talk to us in her next board meeting, so, uh, we just try to get out into the public and let people know where we are, so that we can try to get more of these great dogs into good homes.
You might remember, uh, last year, the mayor formed a task force...
Yes.
To basically look into ways we can improve our animal laws and regulations. How can we update those? We've, we've had various issues arise from pigs and bobcats and all sorts of things I can remember, um, but Pastor Hill has, has been heading out a ton of hills. And I've, and I've met with him off and on. At some point, I, I met with that group, and they did a really great job of just researching other cities and, um, just coming up with great ideas. I, I wanna bring that to the council and, and have those discussions of ways that we can improve the situation here.
Yes.
But like I said, we're, we're not the only city that, that deals with that. I believe our sister city across the river there, they're, they're going through similar issues, and they're also researching ways that they can...
They're really struggling right now, too. They really are struggling.
So it's, it's good, we're all trying to improve it. We can learn from enforcement, I kinda see what they're doing, learn from different cities in the area, and hopefully do what we can to improve the situation.
Well, I also would like, I have gave each of you a little brochure, and on the back of it is my name and phone number, and if any of the council members can find, uh, just thirty minutes, maybe twenty, thirty minutes to come out and tour the facility, if you will call me, I would be happy to meet you out there and give you a little tour. I, I think it would be nice if you could see, see our facility and see the improvements we've made in the two years. We feel like we've accomplished so much, and, uh, just, you know, that way we'll kinda know what we're talking about when we talk about the facility. Thank you.
It'd be worth it, you all sent the tour, really would. I've got a question coming in.
Yes, sir.
Do you all have to pay the transport from here in the middle?
We, did you see our nice red van out there?
I have, yes.
Yes, uh, we did a little, uh, fun break, well, we, we did a little letter writing campaign, and USA Truck, um, gave us five thousand dollars, seed money, and then we did a letter writing campaign to local businesses, and, uh, that's a used van, and, uh, it was just a local fourteen thousand dollars, I think, but we raised about twenty thousand dollars, enough to get the insurance and get it tagged and, and have some money put back, and we've got a company that does our oil changes for free, and so we transport with our van.
You have to pay for gasoline.
And we have to pay for the gasoline, yes. Again, we're, we're just run strictly volunteers, there's no one paying out there, we have an eight-member board, we make decisions as a group, and, uh, we're just, we work on volunteers and on strictly on donations, and we have been very, very blessed with the donations that we get from the people of Bambier this big right day.
Another, we have to go to the schools and speak to various classes. We talked about volunteering and getting involved, and, and Almost Home is always being mentioned, so I know there's a lot of students that are involved and wanting to be involved, and...
Yes.
We just appreciate Connie for all her work, of course, the animal control lieutenant stacks for, for all that they do, and, um, the board, just all the volunteers, it's, it's a, it's not an easy thing, but it's something that's really important, and we want to get, we want to improve it.
Yes.
We want to improve it.
It's very rewarding. Thank you.
Well, before we adjourn, it won't be too long, uh, we'll see if we can get this technology to work better, so the microphones and the other. If you remember, back in two thousand twelve, um, Bambier passed a one-cent sales tax, and this one-cent sales tax went to fund a new police station, a fire station, senior center, some parks and recreation money, some economic development monies as well. We have great facilities, um, that I mentioned there, and it's all because of the investment of the community, and I really applaud Mayor Freeman and just all the volunteers and the council at the time, and, um, some of you who were there. It's, it was a really, really, you, you study city government, you study how to do this, how to inspire the community to invest, and that was done so well because the community was involved at every point. So this is what we funded. Just a few pictures here, just to remind us all of two thousand twelve, one-cent sales This is part of the economic development areas, some of the monies that have gone towards that economic development effort. I think in January, we passed, um, an agreement with, uh, Western Arkansas Planning and the Intermodal Port Group, um, that are working on attracting, um, port to this area here. So it's just part of those efforts. So at this point, where we are is those bonds are being paid off, and half of that one penny is gonna be expiring, uh, towards the end of this year. So the question that we need to ask as the council, as a community, is what do we want to do with that half cent? And I mentioned this a little bit in the state of the city, um, but we need to be talking to the community, we need to be discussing this, um, different civic groups and all these different volunteer groups, when we're in church, wherever it is, um, what do we want to do in the future? Do we want to let this half cent expire, which we could do, or do we want to reinvest that half cent? And if we want to reinvest it, what do we want to do with that money that's generated? Being in a political campaign recently, I've, I've announced over a year in advance, and I can tell you that the community's excited, the community is motivated, the community wants to continue this progress that we're on, those awesome facilities that I've showed pictures of. There's a lot of momentum for that. We've talked about a community center that's been coming up in various meetings. Councilmember Wood has been on the Parks Commission, he's worked in various public meetings, and we've gone in the past to look at different community centers, we've been researching that. Our leadership Crawford County Group, um, they do projects every year, a project that won was a community center project, uh, where they researched other communities to see what the costs were, uh, to build it, to operate it, to maintain it, um, and that project won. And so what I'd like to do, in the same way that we formed this task force, the council and Mayor Freeman, uh, to look into the laws for animal patrol, I'd like to form a task force, um, to, to really research where we are, what do we need to do, talk to the community, and help us decide how to run the forward with this potential, uh, to reinvest in the community. I'd like to have representatives from just the community at large, I'd like to have business leaders. For the community center, for example, I've, I've talked to the school district, uh, in ways that they could partner with us. It's not a new concept, we have joint use agreements, uh, currently, uh, on different facilities with the school. We've been building trails around playgrounds through those joint use agreements, and so they are absolutely excited about the potential to partner with us in some form or fashion. So I'd like to have a school district representative on that task for, task force as well, and a city councilman. So I say that to say, this, these are very, very exciting times, and, and I know that you have talked to various people throughout the community, uh, since the beginning of the year, and I believe, um, that you'd agree that people are excited, they wanna know what's next, and I think it's time to start really putting a serious effort into deciding, do we want to go back to the voters towards the end of the year, the first of two thousand twenty, um, and if we do, then we, we need to have a really, really good plan put together like we did in two thousand twelve, and we need to get the community to buy in to what we decide to do. Any questions? Suggestions, comments? Suggestions, comments?
We're talking about the half cent that was used for the capital improvements for the police station, the fire station, the other half already stays permanent for hours.
Yeah, so we passed, we passed one penny, half of that one penny went to build the facilities, basically, and that's going to be coming off, that's what's sunsetting. The other half is actually permanent. So at this point, our sales tax is one, once it gets paid off towards the end of the year, our sales tax will be 1.5 instead of 2. It's been 2 cents since 2012. And so that half cent that, that is going to be expiring, and we don't have to do a half cent, you know, I'm just saying, it's that half cent is what's going to be expiring at the end of the year. So we can talk about that in this task force and various groups.
I think that's the key, it's not a new tax, you know, it's not something on top of what we already have. But I will say, and I'm sure for all of you, when you talk to people, they're excited about the city actually putting its money where its mouth is, where they can see the police station, the fire station, the Freedom Park, you know, the senior center and all that, but even going back several years, the number one thing on, for our, however long our internet holds up, and for months and months, 80% of the people, the number one thing they wanted was a community center. I mean, that's been for years and years and years, and I think with the momentum we have from everything that this did, this was, I mean, Van Buren Ford's a great, a great slogan, I mean, it is just moving it forward to people seeing what it can do, and I think they're excited, oh, it can be done, and I just, I really, just from a personal standpoint, I would encourage everybody to start talking about this, getting those discussions going, getting the ideas and the dreams going, and, and see what really can be done. I know we also have some needs for fire, you know, we, we have other needs, too, so I mean, this is a great funding opportunity, there's nothing new, just keep the momentum going for what we already have.
Good afternoon. Mayor, how much did that, how much money did that half cent per year?
Half cent brings in a little under $2 million, I think it's about 1.7, 1.8 million. Half cent per year. The bonds that we invested in, I think it was about $10 million for all those different projects. Good opportunity.
I think we're the most progressive community south of Interstate 40, and I think we need to keep that momentum going.
Well, they started, you know, with the journey. You're, you're, you're starting with the journey.
Comments? Before we adjourn, so the next council meeting will be May 20th, the fourth Monday is Memorial Day, so we'll do that a week. John Pulte will be here. Next week is going to be our spring cleanup and e-waste event that we call the annual week, and today's Earth Day.
Saturday.
Saturday. This thing's Saturday. But today's Earth Day, Police Department has worked with our Keep Van Buren Beautiful Commission to raise awareness for litter, cleaning up our community. I had a conversation with someone just this last week who had been away for a while, and they came back, and he said it was so evident how clean our city is. I know we're here, we see it all the time, we may be taken for granted, but when you do travel, you do notice that. We're really, really blessed, but we need to keep that up, we need to continue to, to prowl or touch that. So do I hear a motion adjourned?
Let's go ahead.
So, so, I mean, that one. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.